Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We're going to call the meeting of the common council to order. I will ask the clerk to call the rule to determine a quorum.
Alderperson Ranky.
Here.
Roat.
Here.
Sangstek.
Here.
Vitale.
Here.
Weigel.
Here.
Barsak.
Here.
Chaplesky.
Here.
Lysick.
Here.
Me.
Here.
Probst.
Here.
Ten present, none excused.
We have a quorum. Before we do the pledge, I just had a suggestion from Vince Vitale that after the pledge, we take in a moment of silence to remember the victims in Oak Creek. Alderman Ranky will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We are going to start our meeting this evening with a presentation from Ed Huck titled, "A New Approach to Municipal Transportation Aides." Mr. Huck?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Some of you may remember me. My name's Ed Huck, of course, and I was Executive Director of the Wisconsin Alliance of Cities from 1984 until the end of 2010. The last couple of years, I've been consulting on my own, and today I'm here as an advocate for Fair Share Coalition, which started with the 1,000 Friends of Wisconsin, just so you know what the background is. I have no political affiliation or agenda other than to talk about why cities, towns, villages, and counties should get a fair share of transportation aids. There is a feeling in the public, and although you know the difference, but there's a feeling in the public that the roads are paid for with user fees, gas taxes, and registration fees, but we know that that is a myth, and that myth could lead to more bad times ahead. The fact of the matter is that 80% of the costs of maintaining local roads is paid for either by the property tax or state shared revenues. This has been a trend that has been growing, as I will get to, over the years. Most user fees go to highways. That's just the reality of it. However, it's been an ever-growing highway expansion over the last couple decades, but the fact is that there is less money available for local roads because of the focus on state highways. The governor right now, some of you may know this, but the governor right now has a commission, and that commission has been put together to look at the state highway funding mechanism because the fact is, there's a shortfall, and it's significant. And I'll talk a little bit more about that. But that funding problem could create a bigger problem for you folks here at the local level. Local roads for vehicle miles traveling are less. Twice out of the last five years, Wisconsin has actually driven fewer vehicle miles. And what that means is, less gas taxes, and less gas taxes mean that the state fund is going to have a shortfall. We're driving more efficient cars. Some of us are driving more efficient cars. I still have my 1997 Ford and my 2003 Ford, but the next car I get is going to be a lot more efficient. And again, as these start coming together, less driving, more efficient cars, it sets up the scenario for problems in Madison. The local funding crisis is going to mean problems in your budget. This is what has happened over the last decade, since 1997. You were getting 40% of reimbursement of transportation user fees from the state back to local government in 1997. You're now on around 30%, and it's likely to drop again. State highway funding, on the other hand, has been going up, and that trend is unlikely to stop at the current time, and more than 50%, 60% of that is dedicated to highways. And even worse, debt has been increasing at an ever larger rate, faster rate, since 1997, and all of that has been going to highway funding. So you have a combination of user fees paying for all of state highway spending increases and debt, and now that debt service is putting some stress on the state fund. So, well, local governments are eligible for 85% of the cost of maintaining local roads. The fact of the matter is that counties received in 2010, or towns, 37% of eligible costs. Counties were at 20%. Cities and villages were at 17% of eligible costs. The remainders of those costs come from your annual budgets, property taxes, state shared revenues. So the shortfall continues. 90% of roads in the state of Wisconsin are local roads. 90% receiving 30% of the reimbursement. While highways are 10%, receiving 62% of the revenues. 90% getting 32%. So one of the questions which comes up on a regular basis is, shouldn't the fund be divided based on vehicle miles traveled? Well, I'm not one that believes in that, but even if it were, with 60% going to highways, 40% of the vehicle miles traveled are on local roads. 40%. Now, we're only seeing 32% of those fees being reimbursed. So, just right through this, let's think about this. We know that we need good highways for economic development. There's no argument there. But every truck that comes up through Illinois into Wisconsin, or from Minnesota into Wisconsin, leaves the highway and goes to some local government to deliver the goods to some business that's in a local government. So the same trucks that travel the highways also travel the arterials and collectors in the cities to deliver the commerce and people to the jobs. So there really isn't a weight distribution problem here. It isn't unless the truck is coming in from Illinois and going all the way to Minnesota and not even stopping in Wisconsin, in which case we're paying for that as well. The problem is that you still have to maintain them. You still have to be able to be competitive. And vehicle miles traveled on highways are going down. And let me just point something out. Interstate vehicle mile traveled are under 18% of total trips in Wisconsin. I think there's a misconception that everybody's on the interstate and everybody's driving long distances on the interstate, but the reality is, there are more short trips on the interstate than long trips, and only 18% of vehicle miles traveled are on the interstate. Yet, we are running into bigger problems. 7% down in state shared revenues, and this is after 20 years of frozen, actually, there was one reduction prior to this one, and frozen state shared revenues over a period of 20 years. General transportation aids were down 6% in this last budget. Transportation operating assistance for buses, down 10%. Recycling aids dropped 40%. And taxable property, the pressure on the rates to go up because values are either flat or declining continues. And on top of all of that, levy limits were made permanent in the last budget, which is going to make it very difficult for you folks to figure out how to get your roads and repair that is necessary, especially the arterials and the collectors. Well, we don't want to return to the battle days, and this is a bit extreme, as you might guess, but it's the point. But the fact is, urban areas need safe streets, and so do rural areas. They need safer roads. And this is not what we want to signal to America in terms of economic development. The fact of the matter is that cities are the economic engines of this state, and you need to be able to move people and commerce effectively and efficiently in your city. So the good roads are vital to our economy, but the highways building continues. I just want to point out, there's been two mega highway projects, $4 billion. Now, here's something that I didn't know. I was doing a project for the Urban Alliance, and we have very few multimodal transfer stations in Wisconsin. And Illinois has some massive ones. There's one in South Chicago where the railroads come in and they drop off materials and a variety of the carts that stack up. And there's one down on Highway 80 that's just as large. Virtually all the goods that come in by train into Wisconsin have to go all the way down to South Chicago. Our businesses have to send our trucks to South Chicago, get them loaded, and drive back into Wisconsin. So is there any wonder why there is problems at the Illinois-Wisconsin border? Because those trucks are moving both ways because we don't have those multimodal transfer stations in Wisconsin. So again, 60%, under one-third for local governments, and so I'm here to ask the question, is this fair? Well, we don't believe it's fair. Now, we've tried in the past, I got to tell you that 15 years ago, when I was with the Alliance of Cities, the Fair Share Coalition evolved, and at that time, it was the League of Municipalities, the Alliance of Cities, the Counties Association, and the Towns Association. And we made the same pitch to the state legislature that we wanted to be able to compete and to have some balance in the fund. And as you can see, since that time, we've actually gotten worse. I can say that now because I'm no longer the lobbyist for the cities. But the fact of the matter is, the combination of advocates or lobbyists working at the state capitol, when you combine them, we've looked at their 990s, they're twice as large as the Wisconsin Manufacturers and Commerce. That's quite an incredible lobby. So what we're talking about is a constitutional amendment. Now, that may seem extreme, but the reality of it is that for long-term planning, for you to be able to count on revenues to make sure that your roads are competitive with other roads, that you can compete for people and businesses, not only in Wisconsin, but you're going to be in competition with Chicago and Northern Illinois. That's just the reality of it. There isn't a lot of difference, I mean, it could land anywhere in that area, from Chicago all the way up into Milwaukee County. It's very competitive, and you've got to be able to compete and have the good roads here. So this is the constitutional amendment that we're proposing. Pretty much says, half the funds returned to local governments, and this is what we believe is important. The last time we did this, it was the organizations that went to the legislature. We didn't do the grassroots work, and that's what's different this time. I'm here to ask you, I've got some sample resolutions, I'll leave with the clerk. We are asking local governments across Wisconsin, towns, villages, and cities, to consider support, and even if you don't support the constitutional amendment, we need to send a clear message to Madison that it is critical that balance be restored to the transportation fund, because your constituents expect that the user fees from registration and gas taxes are being used, are being applied to the roads in your city, and it's just not the reality. Only 17% of those costs, on average, across Wisconsin are being funded. This is the current flow of revenue, and this is what we're trying to change. And I certainly appreciate your attention, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Huck. Are there any questions from the alderman for Mr. Huck? Alderman Vitale?
Yeah, I have a question. You know, throughout the years, it's been, you know, some of the wording or words out there that the reason that the state, we really, we couldn't build, say, a toll highway because we receive our funding and will refrain or people to come into Wisconsin base because they have to pay the toll fee. And I don't know if you have any, some questions on that? Is that true? Or we could just, probably the state could just go ahead and build one? I mean, if we want to, or?
Well, the fact is that our interstate is not allowed to be a toll road at this particular time because of federal law, although there is some question about whether that'll change. Some pay come in, and they buy gas here, and they do pay. There's no question about that. The problem is that we have increased lane miles on highways so significantly in the last 20 years that we no longer have the money to even maintain what we've built. This is the crisis that the governor is attempting to solve with this commission, and it's a serious problem. But the way to fund the maintenance for the highways that we've already built, that we're paying for with debt as well as with user fees, is not to take that money away from local governments. And I fear that if there is a legislature that refuses to raise any taxes or look at other revenue sources, that the more powerful lobby will push to even take more aids away from local government. And frankly, I don't know where you're getting the money to maintain what you're doing now with shared revenues not increasing and actually being reduced over the years, and with some fairly punitive levy limits on you folks. I don't know how you're doing it. But I would guess that your budget, you've got to be around 20% of your budget going to streets right now. And I want to point something else out. Your streets are more expensive than those highways because the real cost of a city street is underneath. The storm sewers, the utilities, all of those things that are underneath it are a lot more expensive than the surface highways for the interstate or state highways. So you actually have a greater burden to rehabilitate the streets that move people and commerce around through your city.
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Roat?
Is it fair to say that the road builders lobby is probably one of the largest, most powerful, most influential in Madison?
Yes, without question. And we're actually finding that they're even larger than we thought. There's different aspects of it. We have found a whole layer of not-for-profit advocates for more highway spending, and you'll hear their advertisements during the Badger Games if you're listening to the radio.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Huck.
I will leave this with the clerk.
Great.
And thank you very much for your attention.
Because we had published our public hearings to start at 7 o'clock, we have an eight-minute gap, and I believe if there's no objection, we will just quick do citizen participation and then come back to the public hearings. Seeing no objection? Okay. We will take item F right now. Citizen participation. This is an opportunity for residents to address the council on any matters of concern to them. We ask that you sign in at the podium on your right, either before or after comments, and you may address the council with, using the podium on your left. Is there anybody that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this evening?
Good evening. Thank you.
I'm sorry, can you use the microphone there?
This one.
Yeah. Yes, right. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, thank you for this opportunity to introduce myself. My name is Chuck Giarrigus, and because of the new district arrangement that we have here, I am a resident of New Braun and not of West Alice, but I am a candidate for the representative of the newly reconfigured 15th State Assembly District, which now includes the northern part of New Braun as well as most of West Alice. As many of you know, Tony Stasounis has represented you in Madison for many years. He recently decided to retire, and thus I have been encouraged to run for this open seat. Next Tuesday, you will see my name on the Democratic primary ballot. This is not the place for political speeches, but I welcome opportunities in the coming days to hear your concerns relating to state issues and answer questions you may have regarding my positions. I have cards with my contact information for those of you that might be interested. Thank you.
Great. Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council under citizen participation this Okay, seeing none, and seeing that we have five minutes left, we will move on to item G on your agendas. Our recess meetings of standing committees will be meeting in the room numbers listed on page two, which took up 20 seconds of that five minutes, so we will now move on to miscellaneous business. The mayor's report, I guess it's simple enough to say it's been a very dark week, with the things going on with the police officer attending the sentencing of a drunk driver that hit him on duty, to the Milwaukee County Sheriff's Deputy who was killed, to the incident in Oak Creek in which West Alice fire responders and police were somewhat involved in. And to top that off, it was exactly two years ago tonight that the two officers from West Alice were shot in the line of duty. So I guess all I have for the mayor's report this evening is that we take another moment to appreciate the first responders and the police and the services that they provide. Then, again, remember that they're out there, day in, day out, every night, and when they leave for their shifts, there's a chance they're not going to come home. So that's all I've got for the mayor's report this evening. Do we have any alderperson's comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman Vitale?
Yeah, I would like to touch a little bit in regard to what happened in Oak Creek. December, I mean, July 21st, there was the Italian fest down at the summer fest ground, and I did attend the Sunday Mass. So the preceding priest, the master ceremony, originally, he came from Illinois, from Chicago. So he mentioned about the laws and the things, the way it happens in this country. He says in Chicago, from January 1st of this year, as July 1st of this year, 1,400 people got killed. I mean, I know it's a big state, I mean, it's a big city, but 1,400 people got killed from a gunshot wound, from a gunshot wound. So what I'm trying to say, any state legislators, federal, people run for state, nobody mentioned, nobody mentioned to put some guidelines on the books, on the laws. You know, people can go into their website and purchasing assault rifles. I mean, to me, that's totally a shame. Why anyone in a civil world needs really an assault rifle? Why anybody is able to go on a website and buy so much ammunition for him to purchase for himself? I mean, to me, it's totally insane. In a country like this, we call it a civil world, you know? Things, nonsenseless things happens on a daily basis, on a daily basis. Why? Because the gun laws. I'm not opposing the questions of concealed weapons, but the fact is, the gun makers, the laws that should be changed, to me, it's totally unfair that this country and towns suffer on a daily basis with senseless murdering, killing. And that's one, the issue that I feel, anybody who runs for state or federal jobs, nobody mentioned about how to modify some of the ruling of this land, really. I mean, is going too far. The world, really, here, if you hear some of the outside programming in the world, they're talking about what really happens in USA, in a civil world, and I feel ashamed to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, alderman. Do we have any other alderperson's comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Alderman Weigel?
I guess on a lighter note, I'd like to remind everybody that as of today, Tuesday, we're halfway through the annual fun time we call here in West Alice. Wisconsin State Fair is in town again. I'm very happy to see that the neighborhoods around the fair in the second and the third district, everybody seemed to mow their lawns, clean things up a little bit, have all these visitors in town. I had the honor of filling in for the mayor at the opening day ceremonies as he was unavailable, so I did share the podium with Governor Walker and Mayor Barrett of that other city next door to us that has a little bit to do with the fair. But also a reminder that through a special arrangement with the West Alice Community Development Authority, the West Alice Hail and West Alice Central High School Booster Clubs are once again parking cars to support student athletes here in our community. So if you are not parking cars on your front lawn, and you live too far away to walk to the fair or ride a bike, and you need to drive to the fair, when you come, certainly find us on 82nd and Greenfield, right next to the McDonald's there, it's entrance right off of Greenfield Avenue, and know that when you park there, that the proceeds will be going to support student athletes in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Weigel. Are there any other alderperson's comments this evening?
Mayor Devine.
Alderman Probst.
I just wanted to take a moment and thank the workers, the employees in the Public Works Department, and for getting our city ready for the fourth, excuse me, for the state fair park, getting our roads prepared and ready, and for keeping up with all of the additional responsibilities added with the poor economic times and the number of foreclosures we have. Unfortunately, the banks aren't necessarily as quick to get out and get these yards taken care of, and Public Works has done a great job keeping up. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other alderperson's comments this evening?
If I may.
You may.
Since we're past 7 o'clock, but I forgot to thank, I mentioned this is the second year we're parking cars on this soon-to-be-developed lot on 82nd and Greenfield, and the community's really come together again this year. Obviously, the booster clubs, the parents of the students, the coaches, the student athletes themselves, but we had a couple businesses here in the community step up and help us. Kurt Whalen, owner of Ace of Spray, a local business here, they're actually based in Brookfield. He has a business, and he striped the lot for us there at the old Mykonos Lot, and that really made it much more efficient for us to park cars there more efficiently and be able to ring the register a little bit better. And he had his crew out there, donated 100% of that. And also, this year, we have our two light towers, the portable generators with the lights on them are being donated, the use of those are being donated for the run of the fair from state's equipment or state's excavating, I believe it's called, and another local business that's stepped up to support the effort. Thanks.
Thank you. Any more alderperson's comments? Okay, seeing none, we will backtrack to our public hearings and item E on our agenda. Okay, seeing none, we will backtrack to our public hearings and item E on our agenda. And I will ask the clerk to read item number one.
A hearing on the ordinance to amend the official West Dallas zoning map by rezoning properties located at 5412, 5416 and 5422 West Rogers Street from M1 Manufacturing District to RB2 Residence District.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the residents in this three-house area in the middle came to us about refinancing his property. Because it was zoned M1, the banks were reluctant to refinance it because theoretically, if it burns down more than 50%, they cannot rebuild. We contacted the other two abutting property owners that had asked if they were interested in having their property rezoned as well, and they did. And this is the three houses here. So we rezoned them from manufacturing to RB2 residential, and that solved the problem. And that rezoning is consistent with our long-range comprehensive plan. The Plan Commission has reviewed this recommendation, has recommended approval. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions from the council on this item? Seeing none, are there any questions from the audience on this item? Seeing none, we will close public hearing number one, and I will ask the clerk to read public hearing number two.
A hearing on an ordinance to amend Section 12.10 to add subsection 15 of the West Dallas Revised Municipal Code relating to restrictions on outdoor sales.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a result of our astute city attorney bringing the attention to our, to our attention, legally, Christmas trees and food peddlers are, are not in our zoning ordinance and therefore would be prohibited from outdoor sales. This amendment is a technical amendment to put them into the zoning code. The Plan Commission has reviewed this and recommends approval. If you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions from the council on public hearing number two? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions from the audience on public hearing number Seeing nobody, we will close public hearing number two, and I will ask the clerk to read number three.
A hearing on the special use permit for a proposed addition and remodel of West Dallas Cheese and Sausage Shop located within a mixed-use building at 6832 West Beecher Street and 2074 South 69th Street.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the northeast corner of Beecher and 69th Street sits the Cheese, West Dallas Cheese and Sausage Shop. They've been doing business on that site for over 40 years. As you may recall, they had a major fire not too long ago, and they have rebuilt. Fortunately, their business is doing extremely well and want to expand. They want to add a restaurant area in their adjacent area and hook up to their existing warehouse, which was a former garage. They have two restaurants, one at the Milwaukee Public Market and one in the UWM area, and that's what they want to be able to replicate, something similar to that here. They also want to have some outdoor dining in addition to this. They'll be offering a deli-style restaurant, breakfast, lunch and dinner. There's only two parking spaces on, on the site, but this is a historically parking-impacted area. 15 would theoretically be required. The gray area here is the proposed addition, and then the outdoor dining area. The facade would be extending the existing facade, which is a new kind of a brick building, and then taking the existing outdoor area there and enclosing those into windows and doors to create the restaurant area that ultimately connect over to their, the warehouse facility. The Plan Commission has reviewed this, recommends approval, and if you have additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the council on this item? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions from the audience on this item? If you could give us your name and address for our record, and you can sign in either before or after.
My name's Teresa Hall, and I live at 2052 South 69th Street. I'm the fourth house behind the cheese and sausage shop. I guess my concern is, how many parking spaces did you say that they're going to be obligated to create?
Well, there's, there's two on-site, which is what they've had before. There's, I think probably seven parking spaces out in the front. They're not going to need to be, be required to create anymore.
So they won't have to create a parking lot?
Pardon?
So they won't need to be, they won't have to make a parking lot, a parking area?
That is correct.
For their, okay. I know that myself and at least two of my neighbors that I was able to speak to, unfortunately, they couldn't make it, were very concerned about the parking situation because several of the houses around us have several cars that park on the street already as it is, whether it be because they're duplexes or whatever. The parking's already a little bit congested, at least for the first two or three houses behind the cheese shop. And I know by me, it starts to get busy. Like, half the time, I don't even have parking spaces in front of my house as it is. We are all concerned about parking, but we're also concerned about, well, I am concerned about possible increase in traffic, not only on the street, but possibly in the alley. And I guess I'm also kind of curious as to whether you know if this would affect our property values in any way.
It shouldn't.
Okay. I just think, I mean, for me, I'm thinking that if you have, have cars that are parked in front of your house, house constantly because there's a restaurant there, that it's going to affect people wanting to live in your home if you choose to sell your home. I'm just saying, that's, those are my concerns, and like I said, I know that parking is definitely a concern of two of my other neighbors. My father's disabled and it's, and he can't park three houses down from my house and then have to walk up the street because there's people parked there because they want to go to the restaurant on the corner. And I know that my neigh, my other neighbor is elderly. I have a neighbor across the street who's elderly. I don't know if she ever parks in the street, but I just know that parking is a definite concern for at least myself and two of my neighbors. So I just wanted to voice that.
Great, great. Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to address the council on item, or ask questions about public hearing number three? Okay. We will close public hearing number three, and I will ask the clerk to read number four.
A hearing on a special use permit for 8500 West Greenfield Avenue to reestablish an existing commercial property as a mixed residential and commercial use.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this particular property is a single-story property. It was originally built as, as a beauty parlor, as I recall, and the residence in the back. Subsequent to that, it was converted to all commercial use. In today's zoning code, to have a commercial and a residential property in the same building requires a special use because of its mixed use. The purpose of the public hearing tonight is to approve a special use for that so it can be, convert back to residential use. About the only addition will be made will be interior, where they'll cut off this access and put it in a wall so that it'll be separated from the residential property. Both properties will continue to have two means of ingress, egress. Parking is, four parking spaces would be historically required, and there are four parking spaces on-site. The Plan Commission has reviewed this, recommends approval, and if, if you have any additional questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, seeing none, are there any questions from the audience? Okay. We will close up number four, and I will ask the clerk to read number five.
A hearing on the special use permit for Uplift Multimedia Technologies Incorporated to establish a training school within the existing commercial office building located at 8530 through 8556 West National Avenue.
Mr. Steeble?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just west of 84th Street is the old, which was Clark Oil Building. It was built in about 1934. It's a 50,000 square foot office building, if you will, today. A Uplift Multimedia School wants to go into that facility, and as a result, would require a special use because it's an educational facility. They would have eight staff on-site, four professional teachers, four staff, and then up to 32 students at any, at any given time. Hours of operation would be basically 8:00 AM to 3:00 PM. On-site, there's 132 parking spaces, 75 would be required of all the uses that are currently on-site, including the 15 from the school. Some additional landscaping will be required, not really very much, some of the, on the approved landscaping planned on the western border, some of the vegetation is dying off, and they'll be required to rejuvenate that. And then in these areas, as noted here, some additional arboretum will be planted just to help screen the, the two properties. The Plan Commission has reviewed this, recommends approval. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. Steeble. Are there any questions from the council on this item? Seeing none, are there any questions from the audience on this item? Okay, seeing none, we will close our fifth public hearing, and we will move back to our agenda, item I.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
Madam Clerk, are there any additions or corrections to tonight's agenda?
There are two changes. As part of the committee report, this would be agenda item number 20. The vote was not unanimous, there was a vote that was a no vote. And then also number 64 is a referral change to the advisory committee.
I would then move for adoption of the agenda as amended.
Second. We have a motion with a second by Alderman Reiki. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor Devine?
Alderman Lysick?
I move for approval of the minutes of the common council meeting of July 3rd, 2012.
Second.
There is a motion by Alderman Lysick, a second by Alderman May. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Item K on your agenda, I'll ask for a motion to place item six on file and refer seven, eight, nine, 10, 11 and 12 to the city attorney.
So moved.
Second.
So a motion by Alderman Probst, second by Alderman Barzak. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. License and Health Committee, Alderman Chaplasky.
I'd like to report on items number 13 through 19, tonight's agenda. These are various reports. And license, they all voted for approval or placed on file, with the exception of 19, which was voted to deny by four members of the committee with one member excused. I'd like to move for the adoption of this portion of the committee's report.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Chaplasky, a second by, we'll give it to Alderman Barzak. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all, Alderman May?
Mayor Devine, what was the, what was the reason for denial on number 19?
Well, that's kind of long when she... Apparently, you didn't watch it on TV then.
I had not seen it.
She had a number of violations, but she also had driven to...
Oh, I saw it.
...the meeting...
Yes.
...with revoked license.
I saw it.
And as a matter of fact, the Lieutenant Bennett who was with us was required to call an officer and give her a ticket because of that, because she admitted to that right there in front of us, so. And that was one of the reasons for denial.
Very good. The motion is before us, is there any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
And then we have item number 20. This is a license. It was voted for approval by three members, one member voting no and one member excused. I'd like to move for the adoption of this portion of the committee's report.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Vitale. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderperson Reiki?
Aye.
Roat?
Aye.
Sangstek?
Aye.
Vitale?
Aye.
Weigel?
Aye.
Barzak?
Aye.
Chaplasky?
No.
Lysick?
Aye.
May?
Aye.
Probst?
Aye.
Nine in favor, one opposed.
Motion carries.
That is all.
Thank you. Alderman Lysick?
I move that we stand in recess until conclusion of the committee's meetings.
Second.
There's a motion with a second by Alderman Reiki. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We are in recess.[1789.11]